Our first individual to demand. Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Norfolk Select Board. As a preliminary matter, my name is Kevin Calcutt. I am the Chair of the Norfolk Select Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Those in attendance here in room 124 aside, Judith Lozardi.
Here.
And that is all we have joining us remotely. Good evening. This open meeting of the Norfolk Select Board is being conducted partially remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible, physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of this meeting. With that, would you please join me for the Fledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Blythe, would you mind taking us through our agenda this evening?
Of course. Tonight, we have COVID-19 updates, followed by public comment. The action items tonight include considering, consider application by Norfolk Auto for the issuance of a new Class II and Class III licenses. The Board to vote its intention to lay out the following streets for acceptance at the May 8th Annual Town Meeting, which are Meeting House Road from Liberty Lane to Castle Road, Liberty Lane from Independence Drive to the MBTA Parking Lot and Hampton Road. To consider setting appointment terms for the Fire Station Building Committee. To consider the annual appointment of the Animal Inspector. Discussion items include a review of the proposed FY22 Town Operating Budget, including the Fire Police, excuse me, Police Department's budget. To discuss the proposed revisions to the Town's Animal Regulations. To discuss the State Public Health Excellence Shared Service Grant Program. To discuss website posting of Board Correspondents. Town Administrator Updates. There are five warrants to approve and one set of minutes to approve.
Thank you very much, Blythe. Would you like to lead us in with some COVID-19 updates?
Yes. So, very pleased last week to see that a number of new cases continues to drop. Last week, we had three new cases in Norfolk, the lowest in many, many weeks, and no new cases at Norfolk MCI Prison. So, it's brought our overall positivity rate down to just over 12%. So, hopeful that that track continues and we can get to the green zone soon. We also continue our efforts to help people with the process of getting scheduled or registered for shots as they become available. We, as we're so close to Gillette and we don't have the capacity to administer vaccines of 750 a day, we're not going to get approved for that even as a regional group, and we've explored that with some other towns. But what we are doing is really encouraging people to let us reach out to us if there's some way that we can help. When people could make their vaccine appointments directly to the Mass Program, we were helping them do that. We've pivoted to helping them register. If people have transportation issues, especially to get to Gillette, we can try to help figure those out. And the state's about to roll out a program for homebound individuals, and that's another place where if someone feels comfortable reaching out to our Council on Aging, we'd love to know that so we can try to put that together and help them get their shot as well. So, that's our priority at the moment. And then, as I'm sure if you've been watching the news, the American Rescue Plan has come out. The amount of money directly to Norfolk is just under $1.2 million, and we're going to start to learn more exactly this week how those monies can and can't be spent, so we don't have any plans or details for you on that yet. Besides that, the county, each county is going to receive the equivalent of just under $200 per resident. And so, for Norfolk County, that's about $137 million. So, there'll be, I'm sure, discussions about what their plans are and whether they're going to plan to distribute some of that also to communities. And then separately, there are school funds that will come directly to schools, and Todd and I will be learning more about that. So, early days, but lots of new things to talk about and track and plan for.
Pause it nonetheless as well. One thing of note for the case counts, I think what we're seeing here in Norfolk is actually fairly consistent with the rest of the region and the Commonwealth as well. I believe there's only one of our neighboring towns that is still designated as high risk, but they were also low risk or medium risk for a little while there. So, good to see that that's, you know, consistent across the state.
Yes.
Do we have any questions related to Blythe's COVID-19 updates? Anita, Cece?
Nope, just right now.
At this time, I'd like to open it up for anybody who has any questions in attendance this evening for Blythe related to our COVID-19 updates. If you would like to ask a question, please use the raise hand function at this time. Mr. Rosenberg, go right ahead, sir. If you could just state your name and address before your question.
David Rosenberg, 123 North Street. Blythe, the last time I asked you whether the meeting rooms at the library were available for use, and you weren't sure then, do you know now if library meeting rooms are open?
I do, and they are not open right now. They're still being used to store materials and transition items that are coming and going out of the library. So, the library has not given us a date when they plan to reopen those rooms.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions for our COVID-19 updates? I am seeing none at this time, so we'll be moving on to our next agenda item. Next is our public comment period, which is the opportunity for anybody in attendance to take the mic for about three minutes or so to share an item that pertains to the purview of the Board or the Town Administrator in the confines of this meeting. So, at this time, I'll open it up. Does anybody have anything to share for public comment? Please use the raise hand function at this time. Mr. Rosenberg, I feel like I should ask if your raise hand button is broken, sir.
I don't have anything to, any public comments, so thank you for asking, but no, thank you.
You're very welcome, David. Thank you. So, with that, it doesn't, I don't believe we have any public comments this evening. So, we'll be moving on to our next agenda item, which is to please consider an application by Norfolk Auto, 38 Main Street, for issuance of a new Class II and Class III license. Blythe, some background, please.
Yes. So, Norfolk Auto has had licenses for Class II, which are used cars, and Class III, which are junk cars, for quite a number of years. You can see in your packet, there's some minutes from the Board from 1977, I believe. And they let us know late last year that they wanted to have the business licensed in Kevin Roach's name as opposed to Paul, his father, who's held the license for quite a number of years. So, we started looking into it, especially as we were just recently also looking at the Auto Clinic License, which seemed the same but also different. So, after a bit of research and thankfully some clarification from Mr. Roach and talking to Town Council, we have come to understand that this business has been in existence even well before zoning came into play. So, unlike the Auto Clinic License, they are not held to the same standard of requiring to have a site plan and go through the F-11 process through the Building Department and Planning Office. So, when there is a change of ownership, the law contemplates and Town Council has confirmed that the Select Board in any town should go through a process to determine that while it's not a new license, the business is going to continue to operate as it really has. Simply a change of ownership, even from a family member to another, should be treated as a new license. So, that's why it's on the agenda this way. But overall, the family has helped us understand that they're planning to operate the business as it has and not asking for any more vehicles to be able to be available on the property. And that's particular to the Class II license. Back in 1977, they got a, and then, and then updated in 2005, they got approval to have 15 cars with 12 outside in front of the fence, and that's what they'd still like to do. We have clarified it so that the, these vehicles need to stay on the paved area in front of their property. And that's the only change that we recommend to that license. The Class III license for junk cars has not changed at all. They would still remain behind the fence, and there's no limit to the number of cars that they can have. So, it's taken us a little while, and we appreciate their patience with us as we work through the differences to make sure we were handling each one correctly. But that's a kind of overview of what we're talking about. So, there's two separate motions in here, and I see that Adam Roach is in the meeting in case he'd like to give you any feedback or details that I might have overlooked.
Absolutely. Thank you, Blythe. Mr. Roach, can you hear us, and would you like to share a little?
Can you hear me now?
Sure can.
Yeah, no, exactly what Blythe said summed it up very well. Essentially, we're not trying to change anything. Just Paul is getting older, and Kevin, my father, is taking over for him, so it's something we wanted to address prior to, you know, you know, as he's getting older in his age, prior to anything happening.
Completely understand. Thank you. And just to confirm, the way that this has been phrased out for us here, which I'm sure that Blythe and Bob had covered with you, meets your expectations and your needs for how this should be outlined moving forward, correct?
Yeah. The only one thing we wanted to clarify, and I believe in the draft that was sent over to us, is the 15 cars, the word "used" to be put in front of it.
Which it has been.
Yeah. So, that sounds great to us.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Blythe, I'm sorry. Cece, Anita, any questions or comments related to this application? No? All right. With that, I would move that the Board vote to grant Kevin Roach, Norfolk Auto, Inc., 38 Main Street, Norfolk, Mass., a Used Car Dealer's License, Class II, to buy and sell second-hand motor vehicles at said location described as follows. Wood frame building, 30 by 40 feet, lot size 220 by 150 feet. No more than a maximum of 15 used vehicles for sale at one time on the premises, of which no more than 12 used vehicles for sale outside the fence at one time. All 12 used vehicles for sale outside the fence must be parked in paved parking spaces. This license is issued in conformity with the authority granted to the licensing authorities by General Laws, Chapter 140, and amendments thereto, and expires on January 1st, 2022. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? It is unanimous. And the next paragraph. I move that the Board vote to grant Kevin Roach, Norfolk Auto Repair, 38 Main Street, Norfolk, Mass., a Motor Vehicle Junk License, Class III, to buy second-hand motor vehicles for the purpose of remodeling, taking apart, or rebuilding the same, or the buying or selling of parts of second-hand motor vehicles or tires, or the assembling of motor vehicle parts at said location described as follows. Wooden frame building, 30 feet by 40 feet, area of Class III operations within confines of existing six-foot stockade fence along the front and sides of the property and chain-link fence along the rear of property, approximately 28,292 square feet. Size of the lot, 220 feet by 150 feet total. No Class III vehicles are to be visible from the street. No Class III vehicles are to be located outside the stockade fence. Stockade fence must be six feet in height, no more, no less. Evergreen shrubs are to be maintained in front of the fence. This license is issued in conformity with the authority granted to the licensing authorities by General Laws, Chapter 140, and amendments thereto, and expires on January 1st, 2022.
There's a water.
Could I have just done that with as printed in the agenda?
I wondered that in the middle of it. Just because you're...
Things to note for next time.
It was so nicely done, though.
Do we hear a second?
Go ahead. Oh, second.
Hearing a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And it is unanimous. Thank you very much, Mr. Roach, for joining us. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Best of luck, sir. Our next item this evening is to please vote on the Board's intention to lay out the following streets for acceptance at the May 8th Annual Town Meeting. Blythe, what do we have here?
We have three streets that are ready to be considered for acceptance at the Annual Town Meeting, and that process involves, first, the Select Board taking this item up tonight to vote its intention to lay out the streets. The, then the process after that is those get referred to the Planning Board. The Planning Board develops a report about those, sends it back to us. The Select Board holds a public hearing prior to Town Meeting, and then Town Meeting can vote on them. So, when we first posted the agenda last Thursday, we included five streets. That list has been winnowed down to three, which are Meeting House Road, Liberty Lane, and Hampton Road. Oakview Trail and Frederickson Road Extension are both not, have not completed all the steps required. Figured that out between Thursday and yesterday, so those have been removed. So, unfortunately, you do have three motions to read, and they're quite long and repetitive. My apologies.
Well, since there's three, I think we can go ahead and split those up between the three of us.
That sounds great.
People don't get too sick of hearing my voice. Anita, would you like to take the first one?
Certainly. I move that the Board vote on its own initiative and based on the recommendation of the Department of Public Works Superintendent Blair Crane, excuse me, Blair Crane, and the Town Planner Richard J. McCarthy. It intends to lay out a townway at Meeting House Road from Liberty Lane to Castle Road. It is the opinion of the Select Board that common convenience and necessity require the laying out of a townway at this location. In order to comply with the provisions of Chapter 82 of Massachusetts General Laws and to provide a full and proper public discourse on this matter, the Select Board has also voted that notice of disintention be served upon the owner of the lands that will be acquired for this purchase and on abutters thereto. This notice shall state that the intentions of the Select Board and announce that the Select Board will meet on April 20th, 2021, in accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency. This public meeting may be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Alternative public access to the layout, to the meeting would be done via Zoom, online video conferencing, to hear all persons interested in the laying out of this townway. Please check posted meeting agenda for meeting location details. Further, the Select Board voted in accordance with Chapter 82 of the Massachusetts General Laws to forward Meeting House Road from Liberty Lane to Castle Road to the Norfolk Planning Board for a recommendation on street acceptance.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second. Any further discussion? None. All those in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? That is unanimous. You want to go, Cece? You want me to?
Sure, I can go. I move that the Board vote to, on its own initiative and based upon the recommendation of the Department of Public Works Superintendent Blair Crane and Town Planner Richard J. McCarthy, it intends to lay out a townway at Liberty Lane from Independence Drive to MBTA Parking Lot. It is the opinion of the Select Board that common convenience and necessity require the laying out of a townway at this location. In order to comply with the provisions of Chapter 82 of the Massachusetts General Laws and to provide for a full and proper public disclosure on this matter, the Select Board has also voted that notice of this intention be served upon the owners of the lands that will be acquired for this purpose and on abutters thereto. This notice shall state the intentions of the Select Board and announce that the Select Board will meet on April 20th, 2021, and in accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, this public meeting may be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Alternative public access to this meeting would be done via Zoom, online video conferencing, to hear all persons interested in the laying out of this townway. Please check posted meeting agenda for meeting location details. Further, the Select Board voted in accordance with Chapter 82 of the Massachusetts General Laws to forward Liberty Lane from Independence Drive to Mass Bay Transportation Authority MBTA Parking Lot to the Norfolk Planning Board for a recommendation on street acceptance.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second. Further discussion? None. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And that is a unanimous vote. And finally, I move that the Board vote on its own initiative and based on the recommendation of the Department of Public Works Superintendent Blair Crane and Town Planner Richard J. McCarthy, it intends to lay out a townway at Hampton Road. It is the opinion of the Select Board that common convenience and necessity require the laying out of a townway at this location. In order to comply with the provisions of Chapter 82 of the Massachusetts General Laws and to provide for a full and proper public discourse on this matter, the Select Board has also voted that notice of this intention be served upon the owners of the lands that will be acquired for this purpose and on abutters thereto. This notice shall state that the intentions of the Select Board and announce that the Select Board will meet on April 20th, 2021, and in accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, Chapter 30A, Subsection 20, relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency. This public meeting may be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Alternative public access to this meeting would be done via Zoom, online video conferencing, to hear all persons interested in the laying out of this townway. Please check posted meeting agenda for meeting location details. Further, the Select Board voted in accordance with Chapter 82 of the Massachusetts General Laws to forward Hampton Road to the Norfolk Planning Board for a recommendation on street acceptance. Do we hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor vote, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
I got it there. I didn't mess up the entire thing.
You did beautifully, right up until that very moment.
And that is another unanimous vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next agenda item this evening is to please consider the annual appointment of Animal Inspector. Blythe, go right ahead.
So, this is the time of year when the Animal Inspector position needs to be appointed by the Board. As you know, it's a several-step process. The Board receives a form from the state, which is in your packet, needs to be voted on with a name inserted, returned to the state. They go through their own process in April, and the position becomes in effect as of May 1st of each year to the end of April of the following year. So, this year, we actually had received some letters of interest from other folks for the position. So, the process that we went through was to confirm with the current Animal Inspector whether or not he wanted to be reappointed, and he, and he indicated that he did. I, along with the HR Director, interviewed the other two people who were interested, and we are recommending that Susan Thibodeau from the Town of Wrentham be appointed to this position. Susan has almost 20 years' experience in animal control, both as the, as a animal control officer and animal inspector. So, she comes to us with the job well in hand, knows how to do it. She lives in one of our neighboring towns next door in Wrentham, so she's close by, and she's actually retired from her full-time job in Foxborough, so fairly available to respond to the types of things that are required. As you know, from the dog hearing last year, that's generally quarantines of animals that get referred by the Animal Control Officer, and then the annual barn inspections, which happen in the latter part of the year. I was very impressed by her thoughtfulness and her approach to how she'd handle those situations, especially barn inspections. especially barn inspections, which we have had some people raise concerns about in the past, and think that she will handle that very well, and she's, would be excited to be appointed to the position. So I sent you her resume yesterday, and happy to take any questions.
Next, Blythe. Anita, any questions or comments?
No, I don't, thank you.
Cece?
Nope.
No questions from me either. Thank you for engaging in such a thorough and complete process, we really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
With that, I move that the board vote to appoint Susan Thibodeau as animal inspector for the period beginning May first, 2021, to April thirtieth, 2022. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? And it is unanimous. Thanks, Blythe.
You're welcome.
And congratulations, Susan. Please, our next item this evening is to please discuss the proposed FY22 town operating budget. We have a presenter making a dramatic entrance, yes, we do.
No music, though.
So, Blythe, this is the first of our engagements related to the review of the budget, something that I think we're all very much looking forward to.
Yes.
You and Todd have put a lot of work into this up to this point. We do appreciate the preliminary outlines, it gave us some great content to be able to build some questions off of, but we do look forward to the presentation, so please take it away.
So we have a short presentation tonight that Todd has assisted with, assisted me in putting together, and then, as you can see, with tonight, we're focused on the police department. So our plan tonight is to go over the, the basic outline of where we are in the revenue side of the budget, where we are overall in the expense side, and then dig into the police department a little further. And then upcoming meetings, we're going to talk to the fire department on the thirtieth and DPW on April sixth.
Thank you.
So, so this year is much different than last year. Last year, we went into the budget with, you know, an overall concern about how much the town was spending, and really looking closely at that and understanding it better. And besides that, we, just after that, COVID took hold, and, you know, there was great and very real concern about whether or not, you know, we could even afford the budget that we were planning, and we needed to make further cuts because we just didn't know how this was going to impact Norfolk. And so we did that, and it was tough, but we got through it, everybody made adjustments. And a year later, COVID has had a very different impact across the country in different cities and towns, depending on how they're structured and their, and their economy. And for Norfolk, those adjustments that we made actually didn't come to bear. Tax collections have been on track, both for real estate and auto. Building permits, they've been the busiest they've been in, in years. We've received some revenue sources we didn't expect, and so this year, we're able to budget and make some adjustments back that we think are responsible and will meet the town's overall needs for the next year. So just, you know, a quick overview on the, of all of it. The tax base between new growth and a two-and-a-half percent increase in the levy brings you just over, from thirty-two seven to thirty-four one. Local receipts are up a bit for a couple of the months I just mentioned. And state aid overall is up, both the unrestricted government aid is up three-and-a-half percent, and there's also an increase to Chapter seventy. So overall, an increase of, of one million five hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars from FY21. Just looking at the state aid a little, in a little more detail, you can see the increase in the Chapter seventy aid, school monies at the top line. Charter school tuition is down a bit, unrestricted government aid up three-and-a-half percent. Some changes in additional aid and exemptions. And then, interestingly, the state-owned land is up quite a bit in the grand scheme of things. And so you can see overall that net change in the state aid is up one point seven percent. And so just to give you some highlights on revenues, as I said, new growth continues to be strong. We have typically budgeted around five hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. In FY21, we actually saw seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, which was great. That's a real help to our bottom line. We're recommending that we budget six hundred thousand this year. We want to be careful to not overstate it, so we, because the downside to that is if it doesn't come true, we've got to cut in the fall, but again, trying to be thoughtful about it. We can, motor vehicle excise is on track. We actually believe we can increase it by fifty thousand dollars, and again, not overstate what's really going to happen based on the, the commitments for car taxes this year. Building permits are strong. An area that is, has dropped for us, and we recommend decreasing, is, is meals tax. Restaurants have been closed, not sure when restaurants will really be able to be back to what they like to be. And so we, we recommend a reduction, and that will be a, you know, revenue loss for us this particular year, but we're sure hoping that it continues to get better in FY22. They mentioned increases in the state budget grant items. What we are suggesting is that we believe we can balance the budget without two revenue sources we have been depending on in previous years. Last year, we used a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars of free cash, which was the lowest we'd done in a couple of years. And we think we can balance the budget this year without using any. And also, prison mitigation funds, it's, it's been, in the last ten years, a fairly consistent revenue source, but it's not guaranteed. We did actually receive it just recently, and, and more than we had the previous year, but it's a little unsure to say whether we will next year. And I think it's also important to point out, by not budgeting those and not accounting them, you know, adding expenses, if they do come in, it helps us in a number of other ways. It helps us build free cash for emergencies, it helps us be able to fund capital, which you've been talking a lot about. We might be able to put some more money in stabilization or OPEB. Those are all things that will continue to make the town healthy financially. If we can meet all of our needs on the service side, expense side, then our recommendation is we, we're really careful about that, and not, and not spend if we, if we don't need to. So that's our thrust for this year. So looking at the expense side, overall, the budget right now would be up three point, a little over three-and-a-half percent, and you can see the various line items from last year. This budget is not quite balanced yet. It's out of balance by about ninety-eight thousand dollars, which is, I think, the lowest it's been in a number of years at this point in the, in the process. And overall, that's done with keeping in mind that all of the school requests from all of the school districts are included as what they requested. I think it's important this year to help them get back to what they need to be able to do, have kids back next year. And for the Norfolk schools, it's bringing back a couple of positions that they had to remove. Really, on the town side, there are not, there are no significant changes. It's pretty much business as usual, with some changes in some areas, like in Public Works, moving some things around to try to be better prepared for what we need to get done. And the two items not included in any line item right now, or at the bottom, it says add ClearGov and cost of living adjustments. This year, the DPW and clerical union contracts are up for renewal, and we're going to be, starting negotiations on that soon, so there's a, we've got an amount of money that would be needed for non-union and those two unions to settle those, not spread into the various departments where those people would be budgeted. And the one new initiative we are recommending is to purchase a subscription service from a company called ClearGov or one like it, to help us do a much better job than we as staff can do to help people understand our budget, understand how we are structured and the services we provide, and the metrics about what the work that we do. We'd like to purchase that service and start with their, what they call their insights or transparency package, which would give residents very clear, easy-to-understand graphics to, to review how our budget stands up to all our competitor towns, how the cost of our police department matches up to the ones in our competitor towns. We can build, we can build graphs and charts that help people understand. I'm just going to continue on the police department theme. They track lots of metrics, how many people they arrested, how many, how many traffic stops, all kinds of things. And those can all be put into graphs, so people can really understand, how busy is the police department? What are they doing that's different than the town of, you know, nearby? And see them in real time and understand, they're super easy to put together, and it gives our residents a window into what we do and, and how we're staffed and what we carry out much better than, than we can. So that would be an additional thirteen thousand dollars to start, and a little less in the years after that. So that's the overall, where we're at right now. The drivers, the things that have gone kind of up or down, that, you know, are a little out, a little higher, a little lower. Norfolk County Retirement continues to be a large increase in our budget. It's about seven percent increase next year, and that's, that's something we absolutely have to pay. The biggest, the area where the biggest cost increase is across all the departments is in information technology, at almost twenty-three percent increase. That's really due to two factors. The first is that we agreed to start sharing a position with, part-time position with Milis. We're in the hiring process right now. We budgeted twenty-five thousand this year, and to pay our share of that for all of next year would be fifty thousand, so that's an increase. And also, the cost of our Google Suite email services, they're implementing, Google's implementing a very large increase, and that's going to impact all of the accounts we have. So that's really the reason why that's gone up a lot. As I mentioned earlier, the COLAs and the transparency subscription are listed below that. Have had some reductions. Non-exempt debt is reduced thirty-five thousand. We're going to have less elections next year, it's another ten thousand. And then some really good news, which you don't usually hear, which is that health insurance rates are going to be down minus point six percent. Our usage has been very low, and we've typically had fairly low usage. I think even more so in COVID, people are not going to the doctor as much. Overall, health insurance companies aren't seeing the same costs. But besides that, besides the, the negative increase, they're also giving all of their communities a half a month rate holiday, so we're going to pay for eleven and a half months rather than twelve because it's returning back some, some funds. So that's helping the budget a little bit as well. That's big picture on, on that. So, as I say, a budget deficit of just under a hundred thousand, and we have some ideas of how to achieve that. One, I should have mentioned earlier, it, what it does include is, as you know, health insurance costs are on the town side of the budget, not on the school side. So the five point one percent increase in the Norfolk school budget includes three positions for people who don't work for us today. And so if they're all hired and they all have a family health plan, that's an impact on the town side of the budget that we need to account for. And so we need to continue to talk with them about how we can work that out. Don't believe this KP school budget has been certified yet. They were taking it up last night, but I haven't heard what the result was. Because of the way the formula works, and their overall request is only just over two percent to Norfolk next year. Always a question, will the state, house, or senate propose different budgets than what the governor has? That's always something that we work through this part of the year. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we could spend more money than we have proposed in this budget. We could add more things, but do we want to do that? Or do we want to try to take a little more conservative approach and budget the things that are proposed, but not count those, not plan to spend those other revenue sources for next year? That's really a question to you as we go through the process. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the police department. Their budget is overall up six percent, and the chief and his, his team are here to tell you guys more about that in the, in this slide and the one after that.
Just so, so we could segment questions and comments.
Oh, sure.
Do you mind if we ask a couple of questions related to the town side and the revenues first? Anita, do you have anything that you'd like to ask?
I don't.
Good. Cece?
Not right now.
I think the only questions that I have are surrounding, the American Rescue Plan we had talked about earlier is going to provide some funding to the town and to the county, but the schools are also a target of that. Do we have any idea about what kind of impact that's going to have on? Hard no, okay.
I've got a webinar Thursday afternoon.
Got it. Thank you.
I, I think, well, having said that, I would say that I do understand there will be the ability to use some funds for revenue replacement. In our, in our situation, that's not a, a large amount, but is, as far as details on exactly what we could spend that on, no.
That is enough, that was going to impact any of the things associated to hires or insurance or anything of that nature.
I don't think, I don't think so, but we'll learn more.
Cool. The next one was related to meals tax. I saw that you dropped it by twelve and a half percent. Is that reflective of a trend that we're seeing right now, or is that? Was that?
Current trend, yes.
Okay.
That is correct.
I mean, that's more positive than I thought it was going to be. I thought it was going to be much more than that, so that's good to hear. I wanted to make a note that in my three years of doing this, I think each year, it's been around two hundred thousand dollars is our deficit at this point. So hearing a number under a hundred thousand, I think, is a great success, especially for where we are with rebounding from everything, so great work all around there. Debt reductions, the two debt lines that we have, both saw reductions going into this year. Would you mind talking a little bit about that?
Yes, so both, debt is done on a scheduled basis, so we have the non-exempt debt being reduced because we had a large storage tank that was done over at HOD. That was about a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand dollars annual payments coming off. We added in a little bit more with some of the DPW trucks and road repairs that we just recently added to the debt. So the net effect is the reduction for the non-exempt. And then for the exempt debt, which is for police buildings, schools, and things of that sort, again, they're on the debt schedule, and obviously, as you pay principal down, the debt gets lower each year, so we're on that course with the non-exempt.
Gotcha. I think the only thing that stuck out to me was the kind of roller coaster that I see in the line going across the last four years. I didn't know if this is just a normal cycle that we see, or if this is actually going to be a trend line we're going to start seeing develop.
Unless you add more debt on. Again, the, the non-exempt, what we try and do is, you know, within the budget, keep it around between five and six hundred thousand dollars per year, just to normalize things. So as debt comes off, we look at putting more things on, i.e., whether it's cars or trucks or more roadways programs, just to smooth it out a little bit. And then obviously, with the non-exempt, you know, you're looking at the bigger purchases, fire department coming along, DPW buildings, things of that sort. You need to also factor in, you know, we have debt with KP on their building. So as that comes down, it might be a good time to look at other options going forward.
Gotcha. Great explanation, thank you.
We can't, we, we haven't been able to afford to buy all the things on the capital side that we need to with, with cash, free cash. And so short-term financing of things like vehicles is an important way to get all those things done, but we're trying to figure out what, how we can keep that amount pretty consistent. We don't want to see it spike because it, it makes it hard to balance a budget. Because you, if you have committed to that debt, you're going to have to take something else off because you've got to pay it. On the not, on the exempt debt that's voted a debt exclusion, what we do is look at the schedule and see when can we afford, we've got to find the nexus between when can we afford to expand Freeman Kennedy or build the fire station when other things are coming off, so the net effect to the taxpayer hopefully is at least even, if not going down, not going up. And, you know, that's tough because you might really need to move ahead on a project, but you still have things that you're paying for. So.
That's great, thank you. Blythe, could you just remind me quickly, going back to restaurants for a second? Did we extend the outdoor dining provisions, or did the state extend the outdoor dining provisions going into this upcoming season as well, or has that not been done yet?
I believe that we, when we voted it, and we can go back and look, we voted to, to continue through the emergency, and the emergency's still in place.
Got it, okay, thank you.
We'll check, but I think that it's, I think we're all set. If not, we'll get it on the next agenda.
That's everything I had for now. Chief, take it away.
We'll try. Okay, well, as you know, the Norfolk Police Department's made
Okay, well, as you know, the, uh, Norfolk Police Department is made up of twenty-one full-time officers and, uh, twelve part-time, uh, reserve officers. We have two administrative staff that work in the office, uh, five days a week. So, uh, that's make up of the department. And we have, uh, three on midnights, four on the afternoons and seven on days. And seven sounds like a big number, but when you start spreading them out, uh, you have one in court, you have one at the, uh, as a school resource officer, officer, and you have one as a detective, um, following up on cases. So they're really not part of the, the group as, so to speak. So we have, uh, most of the time we have four officers on days responding to calls or doing other activities that we assign them to. So, um, as you know, last year we went into the budget year, we, our budget was, uh, ended up being a zero or actually less than zero. So we got through that because, and the reason we got through that in whole was because we had, uh, three officers retire during the year. So if you think about the fact that we go from senior, uh, level, uh, compensation to entry level, there is a remarkable difference. So, and then in that it filters out through the rest of the budget. But when those three would have had seventy vacation days that we would have to replace a time and a half, uh, the new officers had thirty days, you know, ten each. So it makes, it makes a, a big difference. College incentives pretty much stayed flat between the, those that left and those we added. But as, as you know, the percentage that they get paid is less because they're at the entry level pay. So, uh, so as far as the, the budget's concerned, there's, they had, uh, lane changes or I call, we call them steps. But in some, some contracts, they call them a lane change. I know the school calls it that. And then on those lane changes, uh, or steps, there's a cost of living increase that was negotiated in that collective bargaining agreement. So, uh, that's where, pretty much where that is. And, you know, the, uh, I have it that the, uh, step increases were about nineteen thousand, uh, for everybody. And the, uh, and then there was about, uh, fifty-four thousand, which was the, uh, COLA of three, about three percent. So that was negotiated three years ago. Uh, so you'll see that as that seventy-four thousand one fifty is up on the screen. As you know, uh, we had three retirements and part of the collective bargaining agreement says that they, uh, can buy back some of their sick leave if they haven't used it. And, uh, if they, as long as they have a hundred and eighty days in the bank, they can buy some back. So I have to fund it because it's a collective bargaining agreement, so I do. And it'll, it'll get better once, in about a year and a half when John and I are both gone. Uh, it should get better, but we, you know, you wanna carry a little bit forward because you don't want that big spike that Blythe was talking about earlier. And after funding, cause four years from, when I'm gone, Bob and Tim will be close to that same thing. So you wanna be able to, you don't wanna have to have it spike all in that one year. So we've always carried a number. And that number has gone on, this is my twenty-eighth year as chief and coming here for a selectments meeting to present a budget. We've always carried a number forward, uh, to cover that amount. So that's pretty much, you know, what the, yes, spike is that shows twenty-four thousand. The next one's educational incentive. We're on the third year of the collective bargaining agreement where we brought, uh, everybody up to the same level of college incentive. Now that goes back to what, nineteen seventy-one when the Quinn bill came in. Uh, so as a result of that, uh, we have people all over the place. We have a, uh, associate's degree, a bachelor's and a, uh, a master's degree, uh, rating. So it's ten, twenty and twenty-five percent. We have a few with masters and a few with, uh, bachelors and some others with, uh, associates. So, uh, it's an enticement to get good people to take the job in the town of Norfolk and keep them. Because other towns all have the same thing and they're all, we're all ve- fairly similar in pay. Uh, we've, we've been pretty fortunate over the years, but, uh, to, to be, uh, paid pretty well. But, uh, you know, there, if we start moving on, we have to replace them and that's a big cost. And we talk about that, that cost being, you gotta send them to academy for twenty-four weeks. You pay them their weekly salary, that's about twenty-eight grand. So, you know, if I, if I was to liken it to an analogy to anybody, it would be like, maybe in, in Cece's job, if they had to pay for the attorney to go to school and take the bar exam and then they went somewhere else, it would be a loss for the company. So in, in the town of Norfolk is our company, so we wanna keep them as long as we can. And I can tell you, this is my forty-fifth year on the job. We have, we have lost one to another town, one. And he went to Las Vegas Metro because he wanted action. Well, he got it because he went out there and right away they had the Rodney King riots. So, uh, but that was in ninety, ninety, I think it was. So, uh, so that covers educational incentive. In-service training. I can't honestly tell you, uh, how much more, uh, training we're gonna have, but I can tell you, we're already planning for it. Because the mass chiefs have said that we are going to have, uh, a lot more training involved for all the reasons that, that are in the police reform bill. And then more, we've already had forty hours of in-service, we've had firearms, we have CPR, uh, we have, uh, DFIBs, we have TASER training. Any others? It just, it goes on and on. We have a lot, a good, good sum of money, it's about a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars. Because when they go to training, we gotta pay them to go and we still have to provide for coverage on the road. So, um, that becomes one of the issues that we have to, we have to manage. And there's additional training that's gonna come out of this, out of the bill. All good things, but you know, it's just gonna, it's not gonna be free. It's gonna cost money to send them away. The classes cost money, uh, send them away costs money, we gotta have a replacement. So either we pay the person that goes away on their day off, or we pay the person that covers the shift. So, uh, one of the things that costs some money is the vacation. Uh, we had, uh, like I said, there was forty less days as a result of the three retirements and then the new people. But in this year's budget, there was some, uh, increase because four people got an extra five days because they've been here so long. One has been here for thirty-two years, well, he got an extra week for that. Uh, one's been here for twenty-five years, he's getting an extra week for that. And we had two that got to the five-year mark and they're getting five, you know, an extra five days. So this, in the police, uh, collective bargaining agreement, it calls for, uh, first refusal for, uh, for the overtime shift. So we pick, we pick someone in the mid-range, pick their overtime rate and then we multiply that out times the three hundred and sixty days that are on the list right now. So, uh, and that, that gets you a number and that's part of the budget. So, uh, over the years, there have been other things that required, uh, first refu- uh, first refusal. And there was gives and takes in the collective bargaining process. And so some of those things went away and other things were added, so. Holidays. In the police business, not, not everybody understands this, but in the police business, we schedule them for a full work week even during, when there's a holiday. Now, the rest of the world has the holiday off, but we schedule them for a full week. So what we have to do there is we have to give them an extra day's pay or a day, an extra day off at, at, at whatever day they pick. Uh, so that's why there's always a holiday, uh, lining in that budget that you see. So, uh, it's a statute law that we get, that they get it. So, uh, we have to, we have to cover it through that. So, and the other one is court. As we know, um, court this year for everybody, um, has been at a reduced schedule. Uh, but we're expecting that all the cases that have been held, uh, or, or, what do you call, how do you call it? Carol. They get moved forward.
Continued.
Can, thank you. All those that have been continued, um, uh, into the next year are, are gonna come forward and we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to send people to court. And we've had a, a little bit of a, a reduced, reduction in the amount of arrests because the court didn't want us to fill it up with arrests. So we've been issuing, uh, complaints. So at some point, those are all gonna come forward and we're all, and we're gonna hear them all and, and the court docket is gonna be busy, so. So that's the, uh, and, and of course we have two administrative staff and we're waiting to see what the collective bargaining agreement ends up being, uh, from this year, cause they're in process now. So, um, you know, it's, they, you usually have a two and a half percent increase. If there's a COLA, then add to that. So, um, that pretty much counts for that slide. Next one I'm gonna have, uh, is a replacement. So. Work, so I'm gonna have him, uh, give you a overview and if we, if I need to fill in, I'll fill in.
So, uh, we're proposing that we purchase a, uh, subscription to TASER for thirty-five TASER. That will give us thirty-five TASER's starting day one, including, uh, cartridges, a warranty, target stand, docking station, training certification, at a total cost of, uh, twenty-six hundred sixty-two, uh, twenty-six hundred twenty-two, two dollars per unit. And we're proposing that we go with the subscription rather than outright purchase because over a five-year period, we end up saving nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and forty-three cents per unit. The, uh, on an individual basis, we would have to buy the TASER at fourteen hundred and fifty dollars. Then we'd have to buy a warranty at three hundred and forty-five dollars. We'd have to buy a holster at sixty-nine dollars. It comes down to nineteen hundred and fifty dollars and that's without any cartridges. So by buying the subscription, we get the cartridges, eight cartridges per TASER per year, with an additional, uh, eight, uh, two cartridges on years one and three, additional training cartridges. And, uh, in addition to the, uh, all of that that I just listed, we get a docking station, we get, uh, uh, instructor certification. And it just works out to be a better program for us. It also saves us on a, uh, TASER has a built-in five percent increase annually in their, uh, costs, in their pricing. So for that reason, we're proposing that we buy the thirty-five unit package as opposed to the single unit package. Currently, uh, our TASER's, we have thirty-five TASER's. Certain number of them are out of service right now. And, um, I believe it's, uh, four are completely out of service with eight that are working but are not a hundred percent, uh, in a hundred percent working condition. We don't wanna have a TASER failure. So, uh, also with the new TASER's, uh, they're gonna be replaced anyways, but it's coming with a new, new technology. And, you know, it's eight-year newer technology. And, uh, during that eight years, TASER has gathered a lot of, uh, data and information. And they studied the deployments and the, the usage and they determined that they wanna bring in the range closer. And they have, um, better performing, uh, darts, if you will. So the, not having the, um, clothes hang up is a failure, especially this time of year in New England because of, uh, heavier clothing. So they're able to overcome a lot of that. So for those reasons, we're requesting the thirty-five unit subscription package.
So a number of years ago, I think it's two thousand and twelve and thirteen, we bought, we split it and bought in two, two sections. Uh, so we ended up getting the thirty-five that we needed as a result of that. When we first, the first TASER we ever had was, uh, Officer Eichel and he, it was a, a single shot. Well, then they, a couple of years later, they developed a, a dual shot, um, so that there's two cartridges. So one of the things that we, you wanna think about is if we went out with that program that you, you bought seven a year for five years, that they're gonna keep changing it and we're not all gonna have the same one. So, and they may make more improvements. We wouldn't be able to interchange parts or cartridges, it might change, things might change. So we, in this case, we get it all at once and we don't have to worry about it for five more years. That's the TASER and we can go back to it later if you want to talk about it. Blythe said she was gonna take this one, but it's the Police Assessment Center. As you, as I said earlier, where John and I are, you know, very close, a year and a half to go and there's a lot of things they have to do to get there. As I've said over and over again, uh, we have like eighty-four years of, uh, institutional knowledge about the town, the police department, other departments. So there's a lot of things that we know that's gonna go out the door in a year and a half. And you have others and Tim and Bob, you know, are very close behind. Bob's got thirty-five years, Tim's got thirty-two. So, you know, as a result of that, you know, you have some good people who are in the pipeline to move up. So, uh, that's one of the, and as a result, you wanna find out who's gonna be the chief, who's gonna be the deputy chief. And then from that group that all interviews and, and goes through the process, you might find your lieutenant also, so.
So, uh, as we did with the fire chief, uh, and it's very typical in, in public safety, an assessment center is where you bring in an outside consultant who puts together various, um, situations and, and experiences and puts the candidates through them. So you can get a, a good, a better picture of, of how a person's gonna re, uh, handle themselves in, in situations that they might be in as chief. And I, I've found over the years to be a very valuable tool to find the right person because, um, one of the most incredibly important positions in a town is, is, is the head of public safety, whether it's police or fire. And, you know, I know it's a fair amount of money, but I, I feel very strongly it will help us make the best decision for what's gonna be a, a huge change after, you know, twenty-eight years as chief?
I'm in my twenty-eighth year, yeah.
Twenty-eighth years. So that's, that's an add that we made to the budget this year.
The next thing on the list is the department leases contracts and software. Now, I know that, uh, we have radio repeaters that need a yearly con, a service contract. And obviously in your public safety, police and fire, you want them to work. So, uh, we, we pay about almost three grand a year for that.
Chief, what's different this year compared to previous years? I mean, we talked, we said it went up a little bit. I listed all the things that you said it covers at the bottom. What's, what's different this year?
The, uh, the leases and the, uh, service contracts from the new stations, they, they ran out after a year. So we're, we're having to pick those up. So that's one of the things. But, uh, in, in the Indian's, uh, station, there's a, uh, in-station amplifier for the radios because when you're in a steel building with some cement, uh, the signal doesn't always go through as well. So they have to wire it inside so that you can get, uh, uh, coverage throughout the station. If the fighter power's in there for a medical, they'd want their radios to work or the cell phones. So you wanna be able to get those to work. We have to have a, a, a phone and radio recorder. Amazingly, attorneys want to know what happened out in the street, you know, and they want, they want it.
Always the lawyers.
Losing this money all the time. Cece. But yeah, so anyways, they, they wanna, they wanna be able, uh, them and the court and, and others wanna be, be able to hear what happened on that call and break it down. And so do we, because we all often play it back and say, and we use them as training events, you know? After action, uh, listen to the thing and say, you could, could've done this, you could've said that, uh, you could've called for this. And so it's, it's a training event for us, but it's also, you know, doc, documents and justifies why we did what we did or, you know, other. So. As you know, we, we got a grant for about twenty thousand for a, uh, uh, live scan. Now that scan takes your prints and immediately brings back your record or anybody's record. But we've had some, John could tell you better, we probably had a half a dozen or so who have said they were so-and-so, but they actually weren't when we ran the fingerprints.
Imposters.
So, or the other way around, you know? You know, they, they found out that they were giving us fictitious information. So, um, that unit works, that's in the, uh, the lockup area. So that has a service contract, so that's about thirty-seven hundred dollars. But we found, excuse me, that's about sixteen hundred dollars, I can make. Uh, we found that that works pretty well and we, we're glad we have it. Now, the other thing we have for those of you who still have a firearm or have want to get a firearm and you wanna have a license to carry, everybody goes through that process too. And that helps us determine, you know, get quicker, because we used to have to send them away. And as everybody knows, you had to wait at least forty days to get it.
And they're gross.
You get all that black all over your fingers, it takes you days to get cleaned up. So now you just put it on.
From like, you know, getting like my series six and sixty-three and stuff, not from like a life of crime back in the day. I'm just clarifying the reason why.
Fingerprinting, you were like putting your hands underneath the table.
Sorry to interrupt, chief.
Not a problem.
I do opine as to how much more awesome this machine is than the prior.
So, we have that. So, we have that. So, then, door and camera security, in-station, outside, we want to be able to know who's accessing the station and when, and that's, that's got about a thirty-eight-hundred-dollar bill for each year. We have a scheduling software, which has probably been one of the best things that we've ever had, because they have a computer program that, that we would be able to fill all shifts, fill details, we know, I can look on my phone right now and tell you who's working, who's gonna work tomorrow, where before I'd have to bring the schedule with me to be able to tell you that. All of the offices that we have are plugged into it, they can do the same thing, they can put in for their days off that way, fill, they can request, request a shift that way, you know, it's, it's just, it's one of the best things that purchases we've made, so that, that has a yearly maintenance agreement also. We have cable at the station, about twenty-one hundred dollars for that, and the internet, well, we need the internet, obviously, so we have the detectives' clear program.
So that's for conducting background checks.
Uh, that's what, yeah.
And other, like, other sources of information on individuals. It can be used in firearms licensing and in investigations for pre-employment and other matters, very useful.
So when we do license-to-carry checks, that, you know, there's always, we want to find out, do they have anything in where, wherever, and, and we're able to find it through part of that. Legal updates, you know, we're trying to stay ahead of the curve, you know, ahead of the ball, so we can find out what's going on, and that's, John Scheft is the, one of the people that we use, and there's others. The C G S system interface, seven, about seven-hundred-and-thirty dollars, and that's, you run all your information through that for, you know, cars and licenses and all, all those things. There's a copier, a lease for about six hundred, and the booking camera actually has a lease. So that's, you know, that, that adds up to about twenty-seven grand, and that's, that's one of the things that where the budget went up, and part of the reason that Blythe reminded me is that, because, you know, we have a new building and all of those warranties from the new building have exhausted, so we're moving up from there. I have uniforms and, and cleaning allowance, well, that's a yearly thing that goes up by the collective bargaining agreement, and we're gonna be having new officers, so we're gonna have to buy a lot more uniforms. Pretty much that's it. So, I'm good. All set to go?
Well, thank you for the presentation, that was fantastic, great information, back to front. I'll open it up for any questions from the board, starting with CC.
So I have a couple. First of all, I have to tell you that I think my new favorite expression is, we don't want to have a TASER failure, like, so much so that I wrote it down, because I'm gonna somehow try to work it into my lexicon, so that's one. And that sort of dovetails with what, I, I mean, I certainly can imagine what it, that, what one TASER failure would be, because you'd sort of intimated it with respect to thicker clothing, that, that it doesn't, it fails to deliver a charge, or it fails to connect and slow or stop or disable the person that you were hoping for it to disable. Are there TASER failures that are the inverse, like, there's like too much of a charge, or like the person who's using the TASER gets zapped instead, or is it just typically just they fail?
So typically it would just be a failure, and, just a failure.
And then the only other question I had, because I really, I like the idea of the TASER subscriptions, how long have those been around?
The subscription?
Yeah.
Uh, I'm not sure.
A couple of years.
Yeah, I'm just curious, it just seems like such a great idea, but I wonder what the heck, I guess, other people.
So everybody, you know, business is moving towards subscriptions.
Yeah.
In everything, you know, software and equipment, vehicles.
It's just a really cool, I just would never have thought, you know.
Surprisingly, it would cost less.
Yeah, well, and that's what, value adds, and all of a sudden he's like, over the five years, nine-hundred-and-ninety-four, whatever the number was.
Yeah.
And, and I'm like, all right, well, fine, then he goes per unit, I'm like, oh, well.
Sign up.
Math, I'm not gonna do the math, but I know, I recognize its math, that was it, those were my questions.
So you asked about the TASER, and there's things that can happen, there's two darts that come out when you have any time to shoot it for each cartridge, so there's two, and they, they need to make a contact, the further apart they are, they're more likely to give a better charge, that charge is fifty thousand volts. Now, I don't know if you've ever done any electrical work at your house, changed a light, light switch.
No, 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 sir, I have not. Nor do I intend to.
You don't want that to ever happen to you, but you need the two to hit, so say the person that you're.
I mean, I've seen the bachelor party, so I mean, I've seen them.
Seen them on TV.
Two, I think it was.
On commercials or on the news.
So.
If one misses, then you fire the second cartridge.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying, yeah.
That's why you have two now, they used to have one. But say, say you fired two and you missed with, with one lead on either one, you could activate a button on the side and do what they'd call it a drive stunt, so you take the TASER and make another connection by just reaching and touching the person with the TASER.
Which is close to what I was gonna suggest, that maybe then you just sort of throw it up.
We always offer the selectmen an opportunity.
Just the wrong side of the test that we're gonna be on.
Still the chair, I think the chair should, should step up so that the can see.
That's a great idea, we'll set that for June.
I think that should happen before the budget, is just what I'm saying.
Oh, the, the other thing you have to think about, the way we do the use-of-force policy is anytime you withdraw it from your holster, you break leather, that's a deployment, so we count that as a deployment in the use-of-force record-keeping process.
When you're, you're talking about your firearm as opposed to your TASER, or just the TASER?
Talking about the TASER.
Oh, okay, so even when, with the TASER, okay.
So, I mean, it counts as, as a deployment for the year. Well, we haven't had any since two thousand sixteen, no deployments where, you know, I, in working different events, I know you all know that I, we all work the stadium from time to time, and, and so when we get over there, people walk up, and Bob would stand up and show you.
Stand up.
You can see that, and they come from a distance, they're, what's that, and it's a TASER, yeah, never mind, I'm all set, and they, they don't even want to, and they, I've already been tased by it, and I don't want to do that again. So we're trying, what we're trying to do with this is spread out, as you know, I mean, we start out with a voice verbal command, you know, stop what you're doing, drop the knife, drop the gun, drop, stop fighting, whatever it might be, so that's where you start. The second, you know, the first one's actually your appearance, most time when you appear on the scene, whatever's going on stops, you know, it's like apparent, they never do it when Friday, when, when they're right there. So, the second one is the voice verbal commands. Third one is you might deploy some hands-on tactics, you might do other things, but you, you get to a point where you want to expand what's in between getting to this guy, that that's, we don't want that, so the TASER is an option. You have your club, you have pepper spray, and you have the TASER, so they're all in the, they're all possible, you have to decide which one of those is gonna be used during that process, so. Kind of like the Reader's Digest version of what goes on, you know, and you have split seconds to think about it.
Right.
You know, I, I don't want to grind anybody about the police reform bill, but they had a long time to write a bill, and there's still some things that are left unsaid or that are vague.
Right.
A lot of times laws are written to be vague on purpose, you know, so that somebody else can make the decision on what they meant by that, so. Anyways, that's, that's my short answer for you.
That's, I would not want to see the long answer, but thank you. I'm just kidding.
See that in court, I guess.
That's it, that was all I had.
Anita?
I kind of had the opposite reaction with the TASERS, because it just seemed like so much money, and at, at one hand, I absolutely want you to have the equipment you need, like, unequivocally, I want you to have the equipment that you need to do your job and to be safe, and the other hand, twenty thousand dollars, this was like, whoa, that's a big number. So that was my response to it, it sounds like you've done your homework, and that's the most affordable way to go, but that was my gut reaction, that that seemed like a lot of money.
So if we broke it down in that, that plan of buying a few a year, I would say to, just so we can marry the same numbers, we would buy seven a year to get to the thirty-five, right? Well, that was gonna be more money than if we did the program. So we, we looked at that and said, I don't know how anyone could argue against that, so, you know, that's why we decided to go with the program, so. You know, I wanted to say a shout-out to the men and women in Norfolk PD, we were a third, for the third safest community in Massachusetts out of the three-hundred-and, what is it, fifty-one towns, and in twenty-one, they just came out with that thing and were fourth, we dropped a whole bunch.
What happened?
They're all, they're all, all the numbers are about the same, but somehow they put us at fourth, so. You can, you can go online, and it's in the town report, under the police narrative, so you can read it there and find out how to access it and, and in the, in the nationwide, I think it was twenty-fifth, so out of, in all, we live in a safe community, we have good people doing a good job, and we have good residents, so it helps on both sides, so.
Absolutely.
Even though we have four prisons down the road, or all three and.
That's probably one of the reasons, I always, my, when my kids were younger, they were concerned, well, really four, I mean, finding entrances in Walpole, but nevertheless, and my kids would say, oh, you know, there's these prisons, you know, are they scary, and, because I used to visit my clients there, mostly at Cedar Junction, but whatever, and I was like, no, because if they do manage to escape, and I'm not gonna say that they won't, because they could, they're not hanging around, they're like getting out as fast as they can, like, this is ground zero, they're going, like, this is the best place, and they were like, oh, okay, for whatever reason that resonated, and so now they're like, huh, suckers who live farther away, that's the issue, so, I, you know, there's probably something to that, people aren't gonna hang around to commit their crime when they're visiting their broskies over at the jail or the prison.
As you know, I've lived and worked here for sixty-eight years, so I know, and my family came, went back to the, my grandfather worked at the prison in nineteen-twenty-seven, so, you know, when, if you go that back that far, they would tell you all the way through to today, that, that over the years, they had a, like a work program, that they would, they would go out and cut brush on, on one fifteen on the state property, they would mow lawns out there, well, there might be a mowing lawn out in front of the prison, and a friend drove by and they hopped in the car, and that was an escape. If they were out there clearing that brush, maybe somebody would try to escape, they don't have that program anymore, they don't, you know, they're, they've reduced it considerably, so. Like you said, they're, they're gonna go to the, if they go to the hospital, they might try to escape from the hospital.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And that's it, you know, there's no way they're getting out otherwise, so. It's, when I tell you it's pretty safe these days, it's pretty safe, even though they're there, and it's not them that you worry about, it's who comes to visit.
Well, I was just kidding, yeah, it's the people who are, but even there, it's not gonna.
Sometimes.
We can have this conversation later, it's still cool.
Anita, did you have any other questions or comments related to the presentation? No? Very good. So from my perspective, I took a different approach to reviews this year, and in my first couple of years going through this, I really was trying to absorb and learn and get a feel for where everything was allocated. This year, I attempted to try to do some analytic work, and to go into how we compared to other communities in the region, and other comparable communities by other metrics. One of the key things that stuck out to me when I did this, especially for our little area here, is that we were one of the highest police expense communities as a percentage of the total expense for the town. We were at six-point-nine percent in our last fiscal year. We were behind a town like Franklin at eight-point-four percent, and right in line with a town like Millis, but everybody else was fairly lower than that. And so I posed the question to Todd and Blythe, and I said, you know, what is it about us that requires us to have a higher percentage of our allocated costs to this department? And you hit the nail on the head. Sitting before us right now, we have one-hundred-and-twenty-three years of experience, I think you noted, we have some fantastic senior leadership, I use the word senior hierarchy-wise, we have some fantastic senior leadership that's been able to produce things like you noted about us being the safest community for X number of years in a row, and to be able to bring forth this culture without having any drop-offs or transitional periods that we would see in other departments. So we're very lucky to have those kind of things, but with that comes an escalated salary cost, which makes up something like, what, ninety-five percent of your annual budget. So I thought it was important to note that in going through that, on paper, you would see that and say, oh, my gosh, well, what's going on there? But when you look at what's actually going on, and how things are allocated, and how we're, how we're structured, I think it just makes a whole lot more sense, so. To your point, thank you very much for everything that you gentlemen and all the men and women Norfolk police do to keep us safe on a day-to-day basis. I'm very happy to hear about the succession planning component, I know we spoke about this before, I think it's incredibly important, given the potential transition that we do have coming up over the next couple of years, to be able to be prepared, so we can keep that kind of culture, that mentality, and all those things rolling into the years to come, so thank you for that as well.
And then just one last slide to wrap up, just wanting to remind everybody, you know, budgets over time, Todd's pulled this together back to two thousand, overall, over all those years, the average budget increase is four-point-three-eight percent, so if we stay with the budget as proposed right now, at three and a half, we would be below that average, so, just information.
You know, one of the things that stuck out to me here was if you look at the last time that we had a difficult budgetary year in terms of annual year-over-year change, back in two thousand eleven, the bounce back in two thousand twelve was at seven-point-one percent.
Okay.
Coming up to this year, granted, we didn't have such a big shortfall, but our bounce back is sitting at three-point-five-two right now, which I think is pretty important to note, given where we were last year, and all the things that we're looking to restore going into this year is to catch up.
Right.
From what was lost.
Yep.
So, thank you for.
You're welcome, thank you for, to Todd, for pulling it together.
Before we move on, I'll toss it to the rest of the board for any questions or comments. Anita?
No, thank you for doing that work, coming in, looking at other committees.
A nerd, I like it. CC?
No.
Very good, well, thank you so much, and thank you so much.
Thank you, gentlemen. So as I said, Chief Kenny will be here next, well, tomorrow night we'll be in front of advisory, police, fire, and public works will be there with me and Todd and I to go over the whole budget with them, I don't know how they're gonna, if they're gonna have any other reviews after that, that's the main event tomorrow night, so the presentation is modeled on this, but a few slides longer, and then, as I say, we'll take up fire on the thirtieth. If you've had a chance, you have any other questions or things you'd like to dive into, just please let us know so we can get ready for that for you.
Blythe may just make a note, I just wanted to say that it was a real pleasure to be able to come forward and have a meeting in person, so much different, you know, so much better.
Yeah, I agree.
Even though we don't have a live audience, just to be able to interact personally makes a huge difference.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
Yeah, look forward to the future.
Yes. We all do.
Audiences.
Thank you.
Hi, guys.
So we missed the, with the revised agenda, we didn't take up the discussion about term limits for the Fire Station Building Committee, I don't know if you wanted to do that now, or you want to wait till the end of the meeting?
Do we have people who are waiting to talk about animal regulations first?
We do.
Let's do that first, then.
Okay.
So our next agenda item is to please discuss the proposed revisions to the animal, town's animal regulations, why, sorry.
Yes, so, we started, we being myself and ACO Hillary Cohen and Town Clerk Carol Green, started this project last spring/summer, when we identified that our animal regulations or our bylaw regarding animals was out of date, that became more vividly apparent over the summer, when we had the dangerous dog hearing and, and all that went with that, so we continued to work on it, got it ready, we decided we weren't gonna go forward in the fall, there was a citizens petition about one aspect of it that didn't pass, so since then, we have sat down and really drilled through this with town council, and want to go through with you the various changes that are proposed, because it's a major change from what we've had for a few years. And so I will, I will start, I put together a, hopefully a memo that kind of goes over it at a, at a higher plane, and Hillary and Carol are my wingmen, wing, wingwomen, wing people here, because they have done an awesome job of helping pull this all together. So the biggest change that is, that goes throughout this whole document is the references to Mass General Law, Chapter one forty, and the various sections that changed in two thousand twelve, when the state took a very different approach to saying, okay, there's either dangerous dogs or there's nuisance dogs, and here's how you have to handle all these things, which our bylaws didn't completely recognize and were in conflict with. So that's really the overarching theme of all of this, and so we've removed the sections that don't make sense anymore and referenced the law, don't try to restate it, because if the law changes, then we don't have to update our own, that's a major change. In the area of licensing, our bylaws are a little interesting, the, the actual fines are in the back of our general bylaws, not in the body of the regulation, so we sought to change that, we sought to keep the, the fees the same, didn't see this as a reason to increase fees, they weren't out of step with what other towns charge, except we They weren't out of step with what other towns charge, except we did add a dangerous dog relicensing fee. There is more work involved in going out and checking on that regularly. It's not something we charge today. I think if I recall correctly, there are presently three dogs in town that carry that We also sought to clarify a couple of things like that males and females are intact animals as opposed to neutered or spayed animals, to be clear. We felt it was important to have a limit on the size of personal kennels. If personal kennels in a neighborhood, more than 10 dogs of six months or older is a lot of dogs and that can have an impact on people. So we thought that was important. We also have, think it's important to clarify the timing of the license renewal that's going on right now. We have a much longer license period than most communities. Goes from January 1st to the end of May. Most are January 1st to the end of March. And we realized that our, the fee for not relicensing your dog wasn't lining up with state law as well. The state law, and I include a copy in your packet, says if you don't pay by the time it comes up, it's $50. You shall pay 50. And ours was changed in 2011 and it's a different scale. So that was a change that we made. Leash law, an important topic in a lot of communities. We haven't had a leash, we have a leash law in a sense here, but we felt that there were some, some challenges with it. We needed to be clear about where dogs can be and where they can't. As we thought about it in real detail, we were concerned that if someone really wanted to challenge what a competent person was dealing with a dog, that would be really hard to determine in a situation perhaps. We also thought it should be clear that various boards control various land in town. The school committee is responsible for school property, recreation is responsible for recreation property conservation. And so should there be a, should be up to those boards to make the decision that it's right for whatever program or situation that they're in charge of, seemed like that was a good idea. We didn't go so far as some communities in suggesting that leashes should be of a certain length. I might like to have a leash that's six feet and, and made of leather. Todd might like to have, use a retractable, you know? So we thought that was something that should be up to the owner. And we also put some clarification around dogs on voice command because that has been difficult at times in, in various situations. We also, I think all of the sitting here learned a lot about the timing of temporary restraining orders and getting ready for a meeting and giving the owner time to prepare and all that. We're not looking to have dogs restrained any longer than they need to be, but trying to work through the realities of making sure that that is, works out when you have to deal with a difficult situation. So we're suggesting a lengthening of that. Unfortunately, we have to deal with unclaimed dogs and cats at times, cats more than maybe in the past. So add some language around that and dealing with both unclaimed and stray cats and the time that we would keep them. Not only for the owner's perspective or for the animal's perspective, not, I learned from Hillary, not good to have an animal in, you know, being, being confined longer than is necessary. One change we don't recommend making, but it came up in the citizen petition last year and it came up again in talking with the petitioner was wanting to allow animals to make noise during 7:00 AM to PM time of day. We're actually not recommending that because it creates conflicts for the board in terms of a complaint about a nuisance dog who barks or for the Board of Health, if it's a nuisance other animal that makes noise that they would have to adjudicate. I could appreciate the sentiment behind it, you know, especially as an animal lover, but I, our recommendation is that we don't change that. And I did communicate that to the petitioner and told her about the meeting tonight, in case she wanted to come. And then lastly, we also really gave a lot of thought to the violations and penalties section. Felt it needed to be clarified in two different thresholds, approach here. Think there's a real difference between a dog that just occasionally gets a chance to roam, somehow got loose and out on the lam versus a nuisance dog or a dangerous dog. And that someone whose dog just happened to get loose, you know, we really, our goal has always been to try and work things out with the owner, work things out with the animal, help everybody get resolved situations amicably. So not looking to give people big fines or, or take serious steps. But in the case of a nuisance or especially a dangerous dog, we thought the penalty should be higher. And, and if someone doesn't comply, the situation dealt with a little more seriously. And so we took a two-pronged approach to that in what we're recommending. So I know I've talked a lot, apologize for that. Hillary and Carol are both here and we want to get your, you know, first read of all this and are we on the right track or are we not so we can work towards whatever that is for May?
Thanks, Blythe.
Yep.
I don't know if I necessarily want to subject Carol and Hillary to essentially just going over what you've already outlined. Is there anything else that you think that they'd like to add or are they really?
I'm sure that they've got something to suggest that I might have overlooked.
Sure.
I was trying to keep it 30,000 feet.
Okay. Carol or Hillary, would you like to add anything to Blythe's outline?
Carol, do you want me to go first? Okay. So yes, this is quite, quite the project and the undertaking. I think that this is a really good rendition from where we are coming from and where we are heading in the future. I think the one thing that I wanted to just add in is because it is totally different is the holding period for dogs and cats. I just want to alleviate everybody that going from the 10-day hold to the seven-day hold was part of the act of 2012 for dogs because study after study had shown that animals that were not called for within, you know, 48 to 72 hours, chances are that they weren't going to be called for. And it really allows us more time to start networking that animal in-house so that we can find placement for it if in the event that owner does not come forward. We did find a mass bylaw that did include cats as well because this has come up in some communities before where cats are listed as personal property as well, similar to dogs. So they would follow under abandoned property law, which could mean that they would be held for, it depends on which part of the law you're looking in. It could be that they're held for 60 days or up to six months. And honestly, that is not the intention of holding an animal psychologically. It would be best to be able to get them through the system and into placement with, you know, our cats go through perfect cat shelter and sometimes Animal Rescue League of Boston. We reach out to all different agencies. But I think that, that I get very few cat reunions and I would hate to see cats languish on a whole period of, of that length of time when I think they would benefit better by getting their veterinary care and getting into proper placement.
Carol, anything you wanted to add as well?
My section was actually quite a bit smaller. It surrounded more the fees and the late fees. As Blythe said, you know, we're certainly not looking to raise any fees. I did poll other clerks in Massachusetts to find out what their licensing period was. And then I actually went to the surrounding towns' websites to see what their licensing period is. And the average seems to be three months. Some towns are, you know, a few towns are extended like ours that goes, that goes the four months. Rentham, Walpole, theirs is two months. I think that's a little, you know, that's a little tight. I think three months is a, you know, happy medium. As far as the late fees go, like Blythe said, and it's included in your packet, the law is very specific on it. I know at one point in time, the town used to have a $50 per dog, which I think is a little excessive. And the way the law is written, it looks like that it, you know, the assessment would be per family, you know, per owner. The, you know, other towns, you know, do have varying ways that they handle it too. Rentham is $50 per dog and then after April 30th, it's $100 per dog. They're quite aggressive. Franklin actually changes their fees to instead of, you know, 20, 20 and 30 after, after their April 1st goes to $50 registration fee. So they incorporate it that way. So, but I thought that, that, you know, the $50 per family brings us, you know, within the law and would just like to shorten the period up a little bit, the four months. I don't know if you guys are, you know, like me, but the longer I have a bill sitting around, the more chance I have to forget about it. So, but that's, that's my, you know, my, my portion of it.
Thank you, Carol.
I have one more to Carol's comments.
Go right ahead, Hillary.
Sure. So I also am in favor with shortening the licensing period and it's, it's not to create a higher volume for the town clerk's office. I end up doing the enforcement part for all unlicensed dogs and I think it would be beneficial to tighten up the timeframe for relicensing period just for the enforcement portion because we do do the enforcement usually June, July, and then we don't really see people in court until November just because of the backlogs of the court. And you can imagine next year is going to be twice as clogged in the court system. I think it would be beneficial to be able to have that licensing period tightened up just, just a bit so that I can start getting the enforcement portion done sooner.
Okay. So based on that input, I'll toss it to the board for any questions or comments, starting with Anita.
My only question was in Section D, their letter B, it seemed like those fines, I know I read that we were trying to not over fine for roaming dogs and because they've put the nuisance dogs and the dangerous dogs together, I just feel like given our experience, I guess, if a, if a dangerous dog has the first offense, $50 doesn't seem like very much. But maybe for a dog that just got off lead, $50 seems okay. And so.
So what we're suggesting is if a dog has just gotten loose and has not been deemed a nuisance, it's going to be in the warning, $50, $100.
Right.
But if it's got to the point where the board has had a hearing and determined that it's a nuisance, it sounds to me like it's a perpetual offender and, or it's barking perpetually. That's where we want the person to, we're simply trying to encourage people to take it more seriously and do what they need to do to resolve it by levying a fine that's higher. I mean, these can be different amounts if you think that that's the right thing to do. I'm just telling you the rationale.
I read it as like D is nuisance and dangerous dogs. So in that section, so I thought this, we are only talking about nuisance and dangerous dogs. And so then it seemed to me like the fines, if a dangerous dog is out of compliance, I don't know, $50 doesn't seem like very much.
It's not. I mean, it's really a policy decision that you want to treat nuisance dogs and those fines different than dangerous ones. I mean, I don't think it's a problem and we can check with town council, can we break it down even further?
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, that's certainly a good thing to debate.
I get what you're saying. I think when I initially read it, I read it as any dog that hasn't had the opportunity for us to review a situation and make a ruling on falls into the first subset of, you know, warning 50, $100. Anyone that we've had, I don't want to say opportunity, but have gone through the process of review and making a ruling on whether that be nuisance or dangerous, they would kind of get lumped in together into this 50, 100, 200, just because we've made a, you know, ruling on how that dog should be managed and they are obviously going against that. But from what you're saying, you're saying that that should be split even further to say a nuisance dog should be 50, 100, 200 and a dangerous dog should be something along the lines of 100, 200, 250 or something like that.
Right. Because given our experience this summer, right, if, if that dog, for example, was in a first offense, I'm not sure that I feel like $50 would be a reasonable response.
Yep.
That's what my belly says.
That's exactly.
And I completely agree from the standpoint that I think that one of the purposes of any fee or fine is prophylactic and preventing it in the future and not just, you know, that's kind of one of the points of punishment. And I'm less concerned, I'm sure the neighbors or whoever are being annoyed maybe aren't, but I'm less concerned with a dog that is just a nuisance than I am with someone who's already been adjudicated a problem, obviously the owner, not the dog, has control over this and then continues, for lack of a better term, to offend. I think that, I think Anita is absolutely correct. I don't think that 50 is enough to feel enough of a sting to be motivated for there not to be a second offense, which should be even more of a leap, et cetera, right?
Yes.
Because otherwise, at what point, if people are, you know, some point I understand that you sort of end up in a realm that's even more draconian, but I think that it's fair to explore fees for a dangerous dog's offense after having been adjudicated.
Sure.
Dangerous that are more compelling.
Rigorous.
Yeah, rigorous. Also an awesome word, rigorous.
So what do you think would be what you'd like to propose?
It says not more than $500. Is that what's in Section A? Do we have to follow that?
Where's the?
Can I just interject a little bit here? I'm sorry to interrupt. So if a dog has been adjudicated dangerous or nuisance in front of the hearing authority and they're not in compliance, there is a law on the books, GL 140, 157A, which does bring the ability for the town of Norfolk to go forward with a misdemeanor criminal citation. So there is a mass law there. Do I think it's appropriate in every instance? No. And I, I think that if we did beef up that section for the dangerous and nuisance violation in our bylaws, that could be a very effective deterrent. But I just didn't want you guys to think that there wasn't something else available as well. So those could be used in conjunction with each other.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah. No, and I, I think beefing it up definitely will, you know, what are people going to want to spend? The $500 on their, on their fence or the $500 for the citation? So they can be used together. I, I think it should be higher. I, I fear that, you know, if we keep our fees, a lot of them in the way that they were since, since these laws, basically since I incepted into the job, people don't really care about a $30 citation or a $50 citation.
60 days in jail. I mean, that's a whole nother.
That'll wake you right up. That would.
That's somebody's attempt.
That's right.
So, so if we were handling as a non-criminal disposition, we should have two separate schedules. Is, do I understand that for nuisance dogs, B, Section B is reasonable, but for dangerous dogs, maybe it's, it's 100, 200, 300 or 400?
Or 500?
Higher.
Five is lovely. Like 150, 300, 500.
Okay.
I think it's, it's a responsibility to have a dangerous dog and you need to take it seriously.
Just the kind of feedback we're looking for.
I think the part that stuck out to me was when enforced through non-criminal disposition and from what Hillary's saying, if your dangerous dog is getting out, there's probably a good chance that there's going to be grounds for criminal charges to be brought up in association with that, right?
She's saying you could pick. I mean.
You can pick, yeah, depending on how we want to handle it.
You can decide that it rises to the level of going for a clerk's hearing and asking for the criminal complaint or you can decide it doesn't and that you get to sort of pick the direction or you, Hillary that gets to decide the direction and if she decides that gets to decide the direction. And if she decides to go criminal, then you're not going to be applying these because they're going to be schlepping their way through the clerk's system.
Which we've just done.
Correct. But that does beg a question. Hillary, if it's, would it then be sort of, let's play the hypothetical game that somebody went off to a clerk's hearing and prevailed at the clerk's hearing such that the, a complaint did not issue, do we then have the ability to fine them?
So under, under the law, I think each and every instance has to be, um, measured on its own merits as far as what the violation was. Um, uh, the clerk's hearing is not your first stop for a misdemeanor. It, it, when there is the threat of, uh, incarceration and a five hundred or more in a fine, um, it, it can go directly to arraignment. Um, so that can be a decision factor as to how, you know, egregious the situation was prior to, or if it was something that I think can be resolved at a ma- at a magistrate clerk's hearing. Um, then, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll go through the totality of circumstances for, for each and every one, but it's not mandated directly to a clerk's hearing.
No, I'm not asking that. I mean, I understand that there are cases, even misdemeanors, that don't go directly, you know, don't, once you fill out the application, don't go to a clerk's hearing. I'm asking that if it's a case that does have to go to a clerk's hearing at, um, and at the clerk's hearing, we don't prevail. So like there's the determination that's made, it's something that happened outside our line of sight. We're going to fill out the application, go to a clerk's hearing, we go to the clerk's hearing, and the clerk doesn't find probable cause for a complaint to issue, or whatever the standard is that happens in this case. Does, are we still afforded the opportunity as the town to fine them? You know what I mean? Like, so we fail and it rolls back. Do we get to still stick them with a civil fine? Because I think we should. I don't know where I'm going with that.
Because we're talking about dogs that have already been identified as nuisance or dangerous, right? We're not talking about any, any dog off the street.
Right. And the way this says on, what I'm looking at is when enforced through noncriminal disposition, the penalties. So when, when Hillary's decide, obviously if Hillary's decided that it's not appropriate to seek a criminal disposition, I know the answer. But if Hillary's decided that it's appropriate to seek it and it should, it, the complaint doesn't issue, which is obviously different than a not guilty, um, do we then have the opportunity to come back or would it have been that we had, I mean, whatever, I'm probably getting too deep in the weeds. It may, but I think the question presented is whether or not we would have then, um, attempted enforcement through criminal and had failed, like, I don't know. So.
We'll, we'll follow up with town council and see what answers to that.
Let's kick that can down the road a little bit.
The other thing I was going to note was that the five hundred dollar cap that you noted was only for the first offense. Uh, the second and subsequent, it goes up to a thousand.
Oh, I really like a thousand.
I do too.
So I had five hundred, seven fifty, one thousand
I'm all in.
Three steps for a dangerous
Well, I like those. I like those even better. We thought the
I just, I don't know how mu- like, we, we should be maxing that out for a dangerous dog that gets to a third subsequent.
His face is going to get wrapped off.
I mean, that's, that's bad.
That's bad.
Is it what's the new, what's the new schedule?
It's awesomer.
I said to max it, but with an even step, so five hundred, seven fifty, one thousand for a dangerous dog.
Love that. I love that.
I, I just don't know if we could really ever do too much to try to deter those kinds of instances.
Let me, let us check with him and just make sure that it's
Slow our roll, is that what you're telling us to do?
Make sure there's no issue with it. I, I, I very much appreciate the sentiment.
And Cece, if you can check with him and see if, if we did, um, both in conjunction with each other, if that would be a stackable situation.
Right, yeah, that was just, yeah, that was more my, I understand if you're going one direction and it's grand and you're going the other direction, it's grand. But what if hap- you know, is there a way to catch them, like, catch any of the crumbs that fall?
I agree.
Do you have everything that you need?
I'm just, is there any other sections that you wanted?
That looked fabulous and thank you for all your hard work.
Evidence of a lot of work.
A lot of work. Thank you, thank you.
Well, I have, I've been much, very much assisted by very able people, so not all me by any means.
Thank you very much, Hillary, and thank you so much, Carol.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Have a good night.
Thanks, Carol.
You too. Uh, so now, do you want to jump into fire station building committee term limits?
Yes.
All right.
So sorry that we miss, we skipped that. So in all the excitement and the, in the awe of all of our great candidates, I just missed me that we usually set a term limit for most positions and we didn't do that. Um, and so we haven't sent the letters out to the committee. I mean, been in contact with them, uh, to tell them why, but wanted to bring it back to all of you and say, you know, what do you think in this case? And I think there's a couple of scenarios. Um, because it's a committee unlike others that has a particular job that should have an end, um, you could take a position of, you know what, we're just going to appoint them till that's done. Not going to happen overnight, you know, it's going to take a couple of years, so that's a choice. I think if you want to set a term limits, I had two thoughts about that. First is, when you go back to the charge, their first real deliverable, if you will, is to hire the two consultants and then do the feasibility study in the first year and determine the building should be renovated and, and expanded or tear it down and do new. Um, and so if you thought about it from that perspective, then I'd suggest a term that would end in June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two and give them that year, a little bit more to get that done. Um, and the last suggestion would be, if you wanted to give them a term of some amount of time, three years is, is kind of the outside of what we generally do. So that could be a choice. Those are my humble suggestions. As options.
I don't really have strong feelings about it. It seems like, um, I guess a gut feeling is longer is better than shorter, given, given that the police stations seem to trickle on beyond the thing. But I, I, I could be swayed in either direction.
So, yeah, so the only reason that I, um, because I get it, right, that it's a time certain, it's not necessarily, we're not necessarily certain of the time, but it is a time certain. So, um, it is, uh, hopefully not infinite. And, uh, so maybe, you know, they're all professionals, that's what they're charged to do, you could let it roll. The concern I have is simply that sometimes people, life intervenes and they don't, they're not, they don't end up being as interested, but maybe they're, they feel bad stepping down and, but they're not stepping up. And, um, so I had sort of generally inquired if, if you don't have a term limit and somebody becomes a problem, they're, you know, new job, whatever, whatever the thing is, I'm not casting an aspersion on anyone who's on this particular committee, but I have seen on other committees where people don't show up. They're needed and they don't show up, or they don't put in the work, or whatever the issue is, it's a problem because there's, you need that, that help. And so I wondered what would be the solution in a situation where you didn't have a term? And the solution seemed like someone most people wouldn't want to do. And if you don't want to do it, either you're putting people in the position of doing something that makes everybody feel badly, right? Like a public hearing on whether or not this person deserves to be on this volunteer board, or they're not doing it, right, because it's too unpleasant and now the board is disadvantaged by their numbers.
Yep.
And so it seemed like if you had something, and no, I don't know what that is, of course, never do I know when I start wading in and making suggestions what it should be, but if you had something, then that would give people the opportunity to say, you know, hey, Friedrich, right, like I'm coming up with a name that I'm pretty confident is on the board, like, watch one of them, like, but that's my name. It's my given name. So, um, maybe, you know, we know someone else who would do great in this role and then sort of make it a little bit easier. So, but, um, but to your point, um, I think that fifteen months seems like an odd term because then what happens after, after that, like every fifteen months, and everyone's like, what, what time of year is it? But maybe it's every June or every, I don't know. I don't, um, I don't really know. And I guess that one of the issues is that since you, you know, and the first one sort of went on forever, you're not going to really know how long things are going to take until you're really getting rolling, which is another reason why maybe relying on the, the organic progression wouldn't be useful. And, and again, do you do it staggered? I, I don't know. Um, like, you know, maybe you start up with, all right, we're just going to do it, um, staggered based on alphabet or whatever, and then, um, and then deal with it that way. I think staggered always works best other than, because what would happen if they all were like, well, the term's up, and they all beat feet at the same time? So I would think that you would want to have it staggered. I know that there are concerns that if people have the term, then, um, maybe they don't come back, but I, I think that the, you know, like, if people don't want to be there, if they, um, they're either going to just sort of not show up or they'll just quit. Like, it's not a mandate, the, the term limit isn't going to keep somebody.
No.
It'll keep people to a degree though. I mean, I think that's true, that to a degree, people will feel the obligation to, um, write out their term. But if there is no term and it seems like something that's going to yawn on forever, they may not.
Right.
So that may be the counter to that too. But that was my only concern was, and I'm sure most people are just, just going to be great and it wouldn't be an issue. But the few times that I've seen it be a problem for people, um, the existence of the term was what enabled
Sure.
um, things to get fixed. So that's, those are my thoughts.
So as it pertains to our most recent example of this process with the police station, as I understand it, there was a single resident member on that committee for a period of time, and then that individual dropped off and then we did not have any resident members on that committee. Is that correct? At the end, we didn't have any. No, no, I'm sorry, there was a chair, that was one, but we didn't have any that in addition to him, correct?
Yeah, I mean, the residents were serving in other roles like finance director or chair of the, or select board member.
Right, but Todd wasn't serving as a resident. He was serving as the finance director, right?
Yes.
So that being our only subset, I think it, it would be, you know, important for us to be able to highlight some kind of structure to how this is going to work, um, so that we don't leave it as open-ended and as Cece had noted,
Yep.
this endless kind of commitment that just goes on and on.
Yep.
Um, Blaise, can you talk about what, you know, given the way that this, this committee has been appointed by the select board, what the process would be to remove somebody that's not at the end of their term?
So really are two options. One is simply to ask the person to resign, you know, maybe your life's gotten in the way and, you know, you're busy and we'd like to get someone else to have the opportunity to step in. So, you know, someone has a quiet conversation and says, hey, Friedrich, you know, would you be willing to do that? Um, and that's probably the most straightforward way. Um, the other way is, as, as Cece alluded to, a little more difficult, which is to remove the person from the position. And town council, whether it's our current or others I've dealt with, uh, over the years, has recommended that's really a process to have cause to remove someone from the job. They're not doing that role for some reason the way they, we need them to. And so you have a public meeting and you basically go through that process and, and remove them from it. So it's, it's difficult. It's public. Um, and maybe they want to stay and the board has a reason why they don't want them to stay. So, um, if they're up, if their term is up, um, then the board has, does not need to have a reason, the term is up and you can either reappoint that person or choose to appoint somebody else. And so term limits give you the opportunity to make a change if the board in its wisdom decides that that's best for whatever the committee is.
I think from my perspective, I would support issuing a one-year term to start for the entire committee, and then we can reassess after the first year, once we have some groundwork done by the committee. People can identify how much time they want to invest, how much they can invest. We might be able to identify those who are really going to take lead and take charge. And then we could stagger from that point forward in the subsequent appointments moving forward after that point.
Sounds good to me.
That makes sense. Okay, great. We will do that. So it'll be through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Very good. Thank you. Um, our next item this evening is to please discuss the State Public Health Excellence Shared Services Grant Program. What an acronym that is.
It's a mouthful. So, uh, this is one of the program, it's a program that these sorts of things just don't come around very often in, in public sector. And it seems as though the state is taking a real, um, significant approach to, um, supporting communities, either expanding regional health districts or starting health districts as a way to greatly improve upon the delivery of public health in the state. Um, they are, they've committed, uh, about nine million dollars to up to thirty grants of three hundred thousand dollars each, each per year or three years, um, with the opportunity for three renewals or a total of almost twelve years to support improved access to, uh, improved public health services. So, uh, as you, I think we've talked about, we've been looking for ways we can move our efforts in public health up and not do it at, completely at our cost, finding ways with partners to do it more efficiently, but, but better than we do today. So we've been talking with both, uh, Rentham and Plainville, who are already partners with in both the MECC and the schools, um, about doing this. And the, the reason that those two communities are natural partners, not just because we work with them already, but that they already have some of the services, the, the staff that we don't have that makes it easier to start to work towards forming a district. Rentham has nurses, um, two of them. Uh, Plainville has, um, public health, um, uh, ep-, um, environmental person. Uh, we contract for everything. We don't have anybody on staff except for, um, and I don't mean to say except. Uh, we have an administrative assistant who supports both the planning board and, and board of health, uh, in Betsy Fijil. Um, so we, uh, bring this forward to you because we'd like to tell, and I want, I want to tell you about it and just gauge your interest in us applying. Um, and I've been working very closely with Rich McCarthy on it. Um, we are supported by MAPC. They've been, they're willing, they're helping us with the grant application. They're willing to be the fiscal agent to, because not really necessarily form an actual district with a, with a whole tax ID standalone like the MECC yet, but work together and add staff and find the right balance to do what we need to across three communities, um, at a level better than we're doing now. We, we really do nothing in the area of, um, public health awareness, um, emergency planning. Uh, we do some of that. Um, but I think unfortunately, the pandemic has helped shine some light about what we could be doing more and, and it will, that will fade at some point. Um, but we can improve service delivery for our, for our residents. And we do spend about eighteen thousand dollars in the general fund budget now. And then besides that, we have two revolving funds that people pay into when they're going to get a septic, uh, t- uh, system installed for that cost of that work. Um, people pay for, uh, restaurants pay for food inspections and that money gets turned in and paid out to those. So we spend more. Have an idea of what that is for those two together off the top of your head? So, I mean, we have a spend that's higher than just tax dollars, um, but we think that we can all do it better together. So, um, it's got a tight timeframe. The grant is due on, on April first. And we at first thought it was to study how we'd form it. There's no on-ramp to study how we're going to do it. This is an on-ramp to do it. Um, and while we like a little more time, we realize that, like I said, an opportunity like this doesn't come around every day. Um, and we're committed to, uh, so Rentham has already turned in a, a letter of interest that we say, hey, we think we're going to want to apply by, from the three towns. An actual commitment that we will participate is not due from each town until I think the end of May or early June. So I'm not asking you to sign on to it now, I'm just asking what you think about the concept. And Rich and I are going to meet with the, um, board of health next week to talk to them because, uh, you know, it's, it's important from their perspective. They still will, would maintain their, their statutory authority. Um, but what we would simply do is change the way the services are delivered that they're responsible for. Um, that's really have, go that, about that a different way. And, uh, as I say, I think we can do a better job for our community at lower than cost in doing it ourselves, which I don't think makes sense. That's my pitch.
Thanks, Blaise. Cece?
Nope, no questions right now.
Sounds fabulous. I think it sounds like a great opportunity and, and bringing three small towns together seems like a really and, um, the money doesn't seem bad either.
No.
So to be supported in that work sounds fabulous.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I'd be remiss if I didn't reference my fantastic comparative spreadsheet once again to highlight that if you look at human services as a percentage spend to our neighboring communities, we are the lowest out of all of our neighboring towns, um, and the KP School District towns. So I imagine that much of that is related to
It is.
how much we invest in public health. And so anything that can help us how much we invest in public health. And so anything that can help us, especially from what we've seen over the course of the past year, to be able to reinforce that a little bit more, I think would be helpful. So this is great. Thank you. All right, that brings us to our next item this evening, which is to discuss any website postings of board correspondence. Or, and anybody received anything of interest?
I feel like there was one. I feel like there was one that I think I was just, was I copied on it?
I received a rather colorful expression of opinion.
Directed to you, but I was being somewhat cagey in case you were like, didn't wanna talk about it. So I was like, hmm, maybe I've seen one. Yeah, that's the one.
Yeah, so there was, there was a
That's the only one that I've seen.
Property owner in town who expressed some discontent with historical transgressions with folks in town.
Perceived historical transgressions. There were no, not.
I, I asked the gentleman if he would like to specify a question for us to respond to. That did not yield a productive response. So that was the only one that I had that I thought would be a candidate for this, this time around.
How many do we have there, up there now? I already saw them the first time.
Ones related to the street signs, probably twenty thirty five, I would say.
How about not including street signs?
Six. But I have gotten some messages from people who are saying that it's helpful to be able to reference those in that forum instead of having to, you know, go through the full process of issuing a Freedom of Information Act request, which they can absolutely do if they'd like to see the full communication line or have any questions about anything else. But, uh, you know, the intent is just to make it easier for people to get tuned into the kinds of communications that we deal with on a day-to-day basis. Uh, our next item this evening are town administrator updates. Blaise, what do you have for us this evening?
Uh, actually, I don't have anything extra except to say if we could go, thanks to Judith, who's keeping me on my toes, we should actually have a motion on the term for the fire station building committee. So perhaps move that the board set term limits for the all new members of the fire station building to make do through June thirtieth, twenty twenty two or something like that. Just so it's official.
Thank you, Judith, keeping us honest once again. Uh, I would move that the board vote on one-year term limits for the fire station building committee through June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. Are you second?
Go ahead. Second?
Hearing a second for the discussion?
Right, well, I second it and I have discussion. So are we saying if, and maybe you guys knew this, so is the board not officially starting until this June?
I guess you could say from now till June.
Did I say a one-year term?
I used to one-year term.
Okay.
From, from today through June thirtieth, twenty twenty two or something like that?
Term through June thirtieth, twenty twenty two.
Sorry, but I, all of a sudden, I was like, oh, maybe I.
No, good catch, good catch.
Well, you know, it's late, but, and I'm hungry. I'm on a diet.
Motion is seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judith.
Uh, since we do not have any further town administrator updates, we'll move on to our next item, which are some warrants to be approved. With that, I move that the board approve five warrants for the period of February twenty sixth through March twelfth, twenty twenty one, as printed on the agenda for this meeting. Are you second?
Second.
Hearing a second? Any further discussion?
I stepped in, I'm sorry. No, it was your turn. We were trying to alternate.
We were alternating so nicely.
I, I screwed it up. I jumped her wave, as they say. Nothing further other than amenities between a friend and I.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And that is unanimous. And Anita, some minutes to be approved. Go right ahead.
I move that the board approve the minutes of March two, twenty twenty one, regular meetings.
Hearing a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And that does it for our agenda tonight. Blaise, we have a series of meetings coming up between us and advisory to review the budget. Do you happen to have it in front of you so that we could, it's basically every Wednesday from here on out for advisory?
Through the April twenty first, when the warrant needs to get to the printer, right after that to get, be ready for town meeting, yeah.
And then we added a meeting for the select board at the end of the month.
Correct.
As our bridge into April, right?
Correct.
Yep. So our next meeting will be on the thirtieth.
Correct. And then we'll have another meeting quickly the week after. We're trying to keep the thirtieth just to budget, but there are a couple little housekeeping things to take care of it. It'll just be good to get done.
Very good.
Excellent.
All right, so with that, I'll toss it around. Anybody have anything else? Todd?
I do not.
Blaise?
Nope.
Anita?
Nope.
Cici?
No, I'm just adding town hall because I was completely under the impression, because I saw Zoom in the instructions. I was like, you know, when the earlier things came through in the last few weeks, I was like, it's Zoom, doo, 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 doo. Wearing my sweats and my, I didn't necessarily brush my teeth today. And then all of a sudden, uh, I saw that it was here and I was like, err, well, thank goodness I found out. Are you guys, so I'm just writing in liberty lane anyway. So other than that, no.
Oh, very good.
Too much of an insight into what my life actually is like.
So I'll make a motion to adjourn, uh, this meeting of the Norfolk Select Board. Hearing a second?
Second.
Great. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a great evening, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.